...group of Johnson County High School students for their individual efforts in becoming Governor Scholar, earning the Governor Scholar last year. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crum to introduce and talk about you.
All right. Well, what I'm going to do is first, I like to set up a little bit so that everyone is aware of what an amazing accomplishment it is, first of all, to be selected as a Governor Scholar. This is a very, as they can tell you, a very long, arduous process. It required a lot of, the application is daunting and requires a lot of time. And they don't just look at your academic performance. They don't just look at your GPA. They don't just look at your ACT score. They look at your community service, extracurricular activities. They want a well-rounded student to participate in Governor Scholars. It's a very select, you know, opportunity. And from what we've learned this year, some of our area schools that are very close to us had no Governor Scholars selected. Some districts around us, others had one, and others just on a waiting list. We had nine selected. And what's amazing is, we have done this more than once, okay? We have had a larger-than-normal number of Governor Scholars. And I attribute that to the fact that we offer so many opportunities for students, you know? So, our students, I think, are better equipped. Obviously, we have great students, okay? I mean, you've got to be able to come with the resume to get it. But I do feel like that we provide opportunities for those students to grow as leaders, to be able to develop those skills necessary to be that well-rounded student that can be selected. So, this is a huge honor. This is not just like getting a regular scholarship somewhere where they just pull your ACT score and your GPA. Like I said, this is a long application process and something to be extremely proud of. So, what I'm going to do is, we don't have everyone here are the ones that are listed, but I'm going, I don't think everyone is here, right? I want to, I want to just read through all of them. You all don't care, if I say your name, come on up here. That way, we can get a picture and everything. But we have Gary Austin Cantrell. We have J.T. Diles. Lauren Harden. We have Raleigh Priest. We have Jackson Ratliff. We have Nada Sofian. We have Crystalin Stambo. We have Drew Stumbo. And we have Sarah Thompson. Crystalin didn't get to be with us tonight, but she actually wound up not even getting to go to Governor's Scholar, because she was also selected. And she chose to attend a prestigious leader's college program at Princeton University this summer. So, I mean, that just shows you the amazing opportunities that her students have. But this is a huge accomplishment. I mean, I think this is definitely worthy of being noticed and something that I think that the media needs to take note of, because it's a fantastic opportunity.
What did each student attend?
Yeah, let's go down the line. Each of you tell like where you went to.
Bellarmine University. Oh, and my focus area was forensic science.
I went to Center College in Danville, and my focus area was music theory.
I also went to Bellarmine University, and my focus area was historical analysis.
Went to Morehead State University, and my focus area was music theory and performance.
I went to Morehead State University, and my focus area was biological environment issues.
I went to Bellarmine, and I did healthcare.
I went to Morehead, Morehead State University, and my focus area was architectural design.
Awesome. Walk around behind there so we can get a picture behind the board, you all can slide back behind there. All right, Tom's my last one. All right. All right, here you go. One, two, three. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, he does another thing, too. Almost all of these students are involved in multiple other activities, sports and different things. Like, Raleigh Priest obviously could be a couple of football tonight, but it's a great group, too. Very proud of them.
You all are welcome to stay or you're free to leave, whichever one you choose. Lauren, Lauren, Lauren. Did you want to talk to the board about going to Camden Park on senior trip? Oh, okay. Moving on, we have a couple of staff recognitions. First, and I'm going to switch the order of this just a little bit. I want to, we want to honor our retirees. We have two individuals who have been with us for several years who are retiring. One has already retired as of July 31st. He worked with us for 14 years, I believe, Charlie, at work at the high school as a night weekend guy and as custodian. And he's just an epitome of a servant. He did whatever was necessary throughout his time here to make sure that Johnson County Schools and Johnson County High Schools were represented. So, first, and I'm going to give you a certificate as well as a small gift, was a white, a black and gold apple. So, come on up, Charles Maddox.
I'd also like to add there, if you all need any work done, this guy right here's the best. I'm telling you, he's got a waiting list of miles off.
And our next one, this young lady will be leaving us at the end of the month, and she has 27 years' experience working in Johnson County Schools. She is currently at the Johnson County Eagle Academy. Have you been there the entire, were you there the entire 27 years? So, it is Ms. Beverly Lee Stapleton. Come on up. Now, can we get a picture of both of them behind? All right. Thank you both, appreciate it. All right, and now, for our Golden Needle Awards, as you all know, each month, we offer one certi, we recognize one certified person and one classified person in our district who has gone, who goes above and beyond their calling duty. These individuals do whatever it takes to make sure our kids in the district take care of and whatever represents. And this month, we have two really good ones, as we do every month. I'll begin with the classified person. This recipient of the Golden Needle Award has been the Eagle family for 26 years. He's an employee that puts forth, puts the job before himself. Most days, he arrives at work before 6:00 in the morning and never leaves until after 5:00. While at work, he always, he's always willing to assist others in any way possible, and he'd be found eager to complete the task set before him, even if it requires cleaning bathrooms or mowing grass. In 2018, he was also recognized as part of the Kentucky Department of Education and Student Transportation Association of Kentucky's Outstanding Training Department of the Year, our leading mechanic in the transportation department and substitute driver, who I had to lie to getting here a run he did, Mr. Greg Dawson. Something I didn't mention, there will be, he'll be given a certificate. Thank you, Greg, I appreciate you. And also, you get a Golden Needle. And this, what makes this special is it's created by the engineering department of Johnson High School, making a 3D print in the art department, then painted for you. So, there you go. Stay up. Your shaking, ain't nothing wrong with you.
You all right, Jason?
No.
Our certified recipient. When thinking about this 18-year veteran educator, words of dedicated, willing, positive, caring, and humble come to mind. She's a believer in children and passionate about doing everything possible to provide them the very best education. She's compassionate towards her students and teachers alike, and is determined to ensure that each staff member feels as though they are a valuable, important part of the educational process. Putting her heart and soul into every task she does at school, she definitely goes above and beyond the expectations of a principal. From working on the lunch line during Thanksgiving dinner, that I may have a picture of, to work in the concession center at ball games, she puts forth 100% effort in all she does. Congratulations to this month's certified Eagle Award winner, Porter Elementary Principal, Ms. Heather Bush. I'll add, too, that all of your people couldn't be here, but smile at that camera because they're watching. Somebody's in trouble.
Somebody lied to you.
Very good. Now, we'll move on to approve the minute from July 22nd, 2019, regular meeting, as well as the bills on payroll through August 22nd, 2019, as your motion to do so. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, your opinion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item five, renovation report. Mr. Adams.
I have with me Kevin Cheeks this afternoon. He's going to take a few minutes and talk about our construction project. And when he gets finished, then I'm going to ask that you go ahead and approve the payment of $349.70, which gets us up to date on this project as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin and let Kevin talk to you just a little bit about our construction project.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I apologize for being a few minutes late. Weather and the traffic kind of got a hold of me. Where we're at right now with regards to the construction, as you know, the ATC project's underway. They're doing a lot of work over there. And I wanted to bring you up to speed. There's a found condition that we're trying to resolve at this point. The slab, the existing slab, as you know, we were looking at raising the floor slab to get it out of the floodplain. And we were doing that by applying fill material on top of the existing side, of the existing concrete slab that's in place. They'd gone in there, and originally, what we did was, per the recommendation of the geotechnical engineer and the actual engineer, structural engineer, we had the staff, and I think your folks did this, drill through the slab in several locations around the perimeter of the building to confirm that there was no voids below that slab. So, they got in there, and the contractor, Alliance Construction, began to do some of the mechanical rough end, utility rough ends within the slab area of the shop areas. And they've been doing a lot of demo, basically about 90%, 90% complete with the interior demolition. And part of that was cutting out a portion of the slab to determine, to actually install some below-slab utilities. And when they did that, everything looked good. The slab was right there, and the grade was right below it. Once they opened it up, an odd phenomenon occurred that we had not seen before. It kind of dropped and subsided around that opening, and as they dug, it got a little bit lower. And then, you could stand on it, and we've got video of it, and I'm sure Tim has a video of that, where you walked on it, and it almost appeared like you were walking on a soft cushion. It was moving and heaving and so forth. So, the first thing that that told us was, there's water getting in somewhere. So, then, they moved over to the other side of the shop areas and dug another hole, cut another hole, checked it, same thing was happening. So, in the meantime that we've been doing this, we contacted the geotechnical engineer. The geotechnical engineer came down, they did some soil samples, and our first thing was, okay, where's the water coming from? And I wanted to rule it out. It's sort of like taking the layers off a grandma's stack cake. I wanted to get to the bottom of it, so we started taking off the first layer of questions was, where's the water coming from? Somebody said, well, maybe it's a water leak. There's a domestic or a sanitary water leak. There have been some repairs done to the sanitary flushing out of a sanitary line. We thought, well, maybe the old clay tile had ruptured or something. So, what you do is, you test that soil, and you try to find out if there's any fluoride in the water or anything like that that would let you, lead you to believe that that would be a city water or a water source such as sanitary, maybe, coming through and leaking underneath. Just got those findings back last week. I think it was Friday, we got the initial finding. They contacted us via phone. We've met on site. I had a progress meeting, several meetings, talking about options, and found out it was not that. There's no sign of fluoride, which tells us then that it's one of two things. One, you have surface water that is coming up underneath that slab, or two, it could potentially be that there is a storm drain. Well, the next thing we do logically is, okay, let's camera the storm drain, the roof leaders, and see if we've got any leaks below slab that may be attributing to that. Now, I talked with Tim this morning. I said, Tim, it's been dry. We had a dry spell. Have they dried out? He told me today that one hole had dried out somewhat, but the other hole was starting to get more water in it. With this rain, kind of tells me, okay, that may be the source. And that, like now, you know, Tim's been anxious, and Tom as well. What are we going to do? We got to, we need to know what it's going to do, what's going to cause, you know, what's going to be the impact of this. We can't just arbitrarily say we're going to do a solution until we find out what the problem is. I don't want to make the problem worse. I would rather find out what the solution is and go forward. We're waiting for the Geotech to get back with us. Alliance was supposed to get us a price to camera the lines. I have not seen that today.
It's at 4:00.
It's 4:00. We had not got it. My staff was supposed to text me the moment they had that price, so I could get your approval to move forward with that testing, just to camera those lines. It shouldn't be too bad expensive, but again, I don't have that number in front of me. So, we're working towards a solution. There's been two things thrown out by the geotechnical engineer for the structural engineer to consider. One is to potentially tear out the slab and dig out the old material, put new material in. Don't want to do that because I'm concerned about the cost of that. The other one is, have you heard of this hydraulic-type jacking and lifting? We can do an expanding, a polyurethane-type foam system. They go in, they drill some holes, and they fill that full of polyurethane. When it pops out the top of the hole, they hit it, and it fills the void. We think the slab is a larger-than-normal slab from the standpoint of the reinforcing. Normally, you get a wire mesh that's a thin gauge, wire mesh. This is a much heavier gauge, which tells us that they anticipated traffic or cars parked on it, and they kind of probably built in a heavier slab. That's good news. But we want to make sure we get the right fix for this. And as soon as we'll know, we'll let you know, and we'll move forward with that. On the security vestibules, that works in progress. You've not seen any progress on the job sites. They're waiting for materials. They're doing their shop drawing preparations, getting all that and getting things ordered, and finding out the link times. And then, they'll be able to say, okay, we're going to start on X break when the materials start to arrive, and work over the school breaks until they get that work finished. So, everything's moving forward. I think it is good news. I don't know if Tom shared this with you. Your DFP was approved finally by KDE, and I think that's a huge step for you in the future of what you're going to do. That's sort of an update of where we're at, sir. Yes, sir?
I've got a question. That was a swamp area of the whole school when it's built. It was built on floating footers. Would that have anything to do with that?
We did find out that when they dug down, the existing drawings showed a foundation system of about three to four feet deep. It's much deeper than that. So, that tells us they may have gone, this geology, I've done a lot of work in eastern Kentucky, and a lot of times, you'll find low areas that are swampy, and you're on a floating system. But then, when you go up the hill, they end up hitting rock, and they end up bearing on rock. That being deeper makes me think they're one of the sources of water, and you all live here, so you know this better than I do. Anytime you see these rock cuts, there's usually a shell layer, and right along that shell layer, you'll see water coming out the shell layer. If this hillside has some water coming through, it may be coming down, hitting that rock ledge that's down. And we don't know this for sure, but we're just kind of following some logical thought process. That water shell, that water may be coming down below and getting underneath that slab. The good news is, you had no signs of heaveled. There was no movement of that slab going up. There was no subsidence of that slab. There was no cracking of that slab. That slab looked good from day one, so we had no reason to suspect there was a problem. We think what has basically happened is, is we took the concrete out for that portion, relieved the pressure, and it's like, oh, wow! It's kind of like me taking my shirt off when I get home. And finally, the pressure's off, and I can breathe a little bit. But it's the same type of thing that starts to relieve that pressure, and we start seeing some things. That may be the source of the water. Maybe it's coming back up because there's no pressure. We want to cap it off and hold it back down and keep that hydstratic pressure. So, wherever it was going before, it continues to go. We may recommend, the geotechnical engineer may recommend, because I'm not a professional in this, the geotechnical engineer is the one that would look at this, maybe putting some French drains around, or inside, putting a French drain to kind of relieve that pressure and make sure we don't have anything build up. Our new construction, the borings we had there, shows that we don't have any issues with the swampy material where we're building the new portion. So, I think that makes us feel better, too. Does that answer your question, sir?
Thank you. You're welcome. So, we've got a motion, or need a motion to approve the $349.70 to Sherman Carter. Motion's made, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you for the report. Next, Mr. Easton.
I have some information I want to pass out to you about our attendance and enrollment so far for the year. I'm going to start presenting this to you each month during board meetings. We'll just quickly go through it. On the first page, there's, if we flip over to the next, the first sheet, is, just shows our enrollment. The black bar, if you look at the graph there, the black bar is the current school year, and then the gold, the gold graph, that one is last school year, at the beginning of the school year, okay? So, it's comparing our numbers that we're sitting at right now compared to how we were at this point in time last year. And as you look there, enrollment at each school, plus or minus 5% in all of our schools, with a growth that we see at the very end there, if you look at the very last column, you see the district totals. You see we're at a plus 18 for total enrollment right now. So, that is very good news for us. And then, you can look through there, the schools are listed there at the bottom. Any schools that, if you want to look at those specifically? So, we are excited at this point in time, and our numbers continue to fluctuate daily. Our students coming and going still yet, even though we're four weeks in. But those numbers do keep changing, but we currently, we do stand at 18-plus for the start of this school year compared to how we started out last year. And throughout the year last year, we did see kind of a continual growth as we moved along through the year. So, hopefully, we'll be able to see some of that same growth better in this year. Go ahead and flip over to the next page. The next page shows our average daily attendance, and this first one is for district-wise. And like I said, we'll be doing this monthly at each board meeting. So, down at the bottom, we'll just continue to add to this, to this chart as we move along. And this is year-to-date. Our month one doesn't officially end until September the 4th, I believe. So, it is just year-to-date. Actually, last Friday, this data, it's represented in the charts. Again, the black is the current school year, 96.53, compared to last year, the same amount of days, 97.11. Down a little bit, but like again, they're still fluctuating constantly. So, that's where we currently stand at as of right now. But if you flip through to the next page, the next page is just the individual schools, still how we came up with that previous number at each of our buildings, each of our schools. That is the average daily rate at each of the individual schools. And again, compared to the two-year, last year, this time, and where we're at today. Again, black is the current. And the last page just simply states that support will also include beginning next month, non-resident students. We'll take a look at, we don't have it that yet. Schools have to report to us. Hopefully, we're getting all the information in from the schools this month. I'd have it by, I believe, October 1st for, for the calculated growth factor and stuff. But by next month, hopefully, by the board meeting, I should have all the school districts, and specifically, the ones that, what we're talking about, the ones we have reciprocal agreements with, will know how many students that we are sending them, and we'll also be able to report to you what students we are sending out. And then, also, also, again, I talked about the numbers fluctuating a lot, been working on schedules, trying to figure out our no-show list and all that. But I also look at perfect attendance, schools, each school, and how many kids they have having perfect attendance. And we may look at withdrawals and entries and re-entries into the district as well. But again, this is something, I think it's good. Mr. Coggin discussed it with me. We thought it was a good idea to start doing this. And mainly, mainly, you know, we get down to that, that point in time, again, we start talking about these reciprocal agreements or non-district contracts, might be good information that we can just click back on, take a look at. Any questions?
Thank you. Good snapshot-type information. Using the ready. Next, we've got old business, Mr. Adams.
This is our second reading of policy procedure updates. If you guys don't have any questions, I am going to ask that you approve the policy updates as written. I've also, you also have attached the procedures that have been recommended for changes as well. You don't have to approve those, but I do recommend that you accept the policy changes as written.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. New business, Ms. Patton.
Yes, last year, our elementary media specialist librarian asked if she could be put back into the regular classroom to serve as a teacher. And so, this summer, we had to post a position for a school librarian, media specialist, and no one applied for it. So, we have to get an emergency certification for the person who has accepted the position. And she has already worked with the college to get going on her, the updates that she needs to get. But one thing we have to have is an approval from you, that, because we did have to go the emergency certification route.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Made.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made, the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Coggin, school trips?
Mr. Coggin had to leave, but we're asking for approval for volleyball state overnight trip to Frankfurt, August 30th through September 1st, and for the marching band to travel out of state to Parker's Burke South High School, October 26th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Sue one.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made, the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Coggin.
I'm asking approval for the dual-credit MLA with Eastern Kentucky University that allows our high school students in Johnson County to get high school credit, well as college credit, for certain classes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Made.
Motion's made, the second.
Second.
Motion's made, the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. New business, Ms. Patton.
Yes, last year, our elementary media specialist librarian asked if she could be put back into the regular classroom to serve as a teacher. And so, this summer, we had to post a position for a school librarian, media specialist, and no one applied for it. So, we have to get an emergency certification for the person who has accepted the position. And she has already worked with the college to get going on her, the updates that she needs to get. But one thing we have to have is an approval from you, that, because we did have to go the emergency certification route.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Made.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made, the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we've got Ms. Rice.
I need approval for an agreement between Mountain Comprehensive Care and the school system for a sites program. They provide us with therapeutic assistance and a counselor in the classroom, and we provide a teacher and an aide in the classroom.
Motion is made, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Coggin.
I'm asking approval for the dual-credit MLA with Eastern Kentucky University that allows our high school students in Johnson County to get high school credit, well as college credit, for certain classes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Made.
Motion's made, the second.
Second.
Motion's made, the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Crum, school trips?
Mr. Crum had to leave, but we're asking for approval for volleyball state overnight trip to Frankfurt, August 30th through September 1st, and for the marching band to travel out of state to Parker's Burke South High School, October 26th.[1728.12] South High School, October 26th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Mr. Cochran, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
Pursuant to, uh, 702 KAR 1.170, it is that secured and that abreach procedures. We do have that in place, and every year before, August 31st, we have to let you all know that we have everything in place and we can get everything where we go.
Very good. No action.
Nothing notified.
Thank you. Item F, school-wide fundraisers and fall festivals. Uh, Mr. Pierce? Butcher?
Yes, we were asking that you guys agree to let us sell the mums, again, this year from Griffith Farm, like we did last year for our school-wide fund, fall fundraiser and also our PTO doing their fall festival.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
We're also asking approval to sell mums, and I did ask Ms. Butcher if we could run the fundraiser at the same time, and she graciously said no.
Very good. Um, Mr. Dowes?
Uh, he is wanting to, um, do a fundraiser with Chris Queen for the fall as well as the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Yaw?
I also, uh, we're asking approval out of WR for our fall festival, uh, and, uh, and it'll be on November the 2nd. Mr. Pierce asked me to, to, to do his. He had, uh, popcornopolis and Little Caesar's, pizza kits for athletics, and their fall festival, he wants to do it on November 4th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Made.
Second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Adams, item G.
We had, uh, one list already approved for surplus items, but since school started, we've had, we've, uh, we've got some other items in the shop that, uh, after we went through, we do need to add those as surplus items. Some of them are, I think there's a couple copy machines, not sure if they work. There's a couple ice machines, I know, I know they are not, uh, I'm not sure they work either. And then we've got, uh, the old conveyors, I think there's two of them left that, uh, we'd like to go ahead and sell, and then I think there's some small miscellaneous stuff that's, we've kinda got crated up and, uh, to, to, we ask preparation to sell those.
Thank you. Is there, uh, any action you need on that one? Make a motion to approve the declared items?
Yeah.
Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made in second, any discussion? Now we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item H, Ms. Patton?
Yes, our Family Resource Center and Youth Service Center directors are, uh, requesting the opportunity to submit ASAP mini-grants, and it is for drug prevention programs within the schools. And there's no cost to the board.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item, uh, I, Mr. Young?
Uh, yeah, we'd like, uh, girls, uh, permission to participate in the Walmart local community grant, uh, can be up to $5,000 for different things.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Only.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item J, Ms. Patton?
Uh, yes, we should have a blue and white packet up there, and what it includes is, uh, for every federal program that we, uh, have in Johnson County, and some state programs such as ESS and others, we have to show that we will comply by every component of each one of these grants, um, that we would spend the money a certain way and, uh, that we will follow all the guidelines. So we had to go through the entire assurances packet and mark yes that we would, or, and if it doesn't apply, then why? So, uh, what you have in front of you is every statement that we had to include, and then we have to have a, uh, board approval from you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item nine, Mr. Cochran?
As you are aware, I am evaluated each year, uh, based on the Superintendent Professional Growth and Evaluation System. Uh, each month, I normally give you updates on, on one of the standards. This month, I'll start all over, so this is, I'll give you a sample of my standard one, which is strategic leadership, uh, some of the practices, some examples of the practices that I have, uh, been involved myself in to meet that standard, so I'll give you a copy of that, if you're passing that down. Also have a copy, uh, texted to you today, but a list of all events, uh, going on this week at school, and notable chip opening invitations to any of our schools. Reminder that tomorrow night is an auction that Mr. Adams was talking about. And I have one more thing, uh, as you know, you approved driver's education back several months ago, bringing it back to Johnson High School, which I think is a wonderful opportunity for not only our kids, uh, but for our parents, as it will hopefully help with the entrance costs. Uh, after working for some time to date, we did, uh, put our hands on, I actually got behind the wheel and drove over here, a, a car that's been donated for, to Johnson County Schools, for driver's ed, uh, donated by Hutch Auto Group, so we're not gonna thank Hutch and Bob Hutchinson for donating that car to help our school and our students.
Thank you. Also, you've got the superintendent's personnel report, and if you have any questions, check with him, and at this point in time, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Got it.